Okay, I'll call the order the February 19th. Regular meeting of Haywood County Board of Commissioners. If everyone would please stand for the pledge and then after that I'm going to ask Pastor Steve Frazier to come forward and give our invocation. He's filling in for his son Josh Frazier who's on a mission trip in Southeast Asia and I appreciate him coming in for that. So if everyone would, I will start the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the light, to the honest faith of my heart, and to remember that which stands on my nation under God, indivisible, and indelible in all.
Let us pray. Our Father, we come before you most gracious throne of grace tonight in Jesus' name. And Father, we recognize that you are omnipresent, you're everywhere, all the time. We recognize that you are omniscient, you know everything. We recognize tonight that you are omnipotent, you are all-powerful, almighty. And so we come tonight asking for your help because we know that our help comes from the Lord. We ask that you guide the minds and the hearts of those who lead this county and those who reside here. I pray that, God, everything that is said and done tonight would be for your glory. And I pray that we'd realize tonight that, God, everything in life is about you. And, Lord, I pray that we'd lean on you and trust in you with all of our heart and lean not to our own understanding but to acknowledge you in all of our ways and realize that you will direct our paths. So bless our nation, bless our state, bless our county. And thank you for this blessed county. God, just pour your grace out upon it. So just take this meeting tonight and bless those who will speak. And I pray that, again, everything would be done here tonight for your glory. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, thank you Pastor Frazier. Okay, our next order of business would be, will be a public hearing regarding amendments to multiple ordinances. And our Development Services Director, Garen Bradish, and Development Services Coordinator, Jody Ferguson, is here tonight to present, or are here tonight to present the first phase of the hearing.
Well, thank you Commissioners. I just want to give a quick thank you to all the people with Development Services that worked on the four ordinances we're going to present. We have the erosion ordinance, the slope ordinance, watershed, and the telecommunications ordinance. Of course, these ordinances have been around for quite some time, so I'd have to say, first off, thanks to Chris Boyd. These ordinances that he was integral in creating have served the county well over the years. And then Jody, of course, has worked the longest with Chris, so her knowledge of the ordinance has proved as a great guidance for the rest of us as we work through these. We did bring in Mark Pruitt to work on the erosion and the slope ordinance, and he kind of went through a very detailed line-by-line look at the ordinances. Tim Sear, of course, is our field person who is out there, and we want to make sure the ordinances for erosion and slope meet his day-to-day activities. They're his guidebook for what he does. And I need to thank Cole Sutton. He was on the keyboards. So basically, we would go into our conference room over the months and project these ordinances up on the wall, and Cole would be sitting there while the rest of us constantly told him, "All right, go back up to this line, go down here, add a comma here." So his patience in working through this, I really have to thank him for what he did. We need to thank Joey for helping give some input on telecommunication. Once we went through all of our ordinances, we sent them off to Frank. Frank did the 160D and all the legal things that he does, and so thank you Frank for providing that. And these ordinance, some of them may have five or six versions before we were said and done with them. And in the end, we passed them to Amy, and she cleaned the mess up for us, so thank you, Amy, for formatting and doing all that. So I'm going to let Jody do the presentation of the four.
Hey, good evening. Everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, Jody, we're attempting to get the screens to come down, but they're not wanting to cooperate, so if you wonder what that noise is.
We'll pause just a second. Three or four minutes. Okay. That's okay. It's up to you all if you want me to.
I didn't hear what you said, Amy.
She said three or four minutes for it to reset.
Okay. I tell you what, let's just go to a regular public comment. Oh, they're coming down?
They're coming down.
They're coming. They're going to fall now. Technology's great when it works.
You guys just tell me when you're ready for me to start. It looks like it's coming in there.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Okay. So I second that. Technology.
That's why you had Cole on the keyboard.
Absolutely.
Those young guys know how to use it.
They, they really are so much better with that. So we're going to start tonight with an ordinance that we have made quite an effort to update our wireless telecommunications ordinance. And let's see if I'm going the right way here. In Haywood County, we've had a wireless telecommunications ordinance since 1998, but we have not made any updates to this ordinance since 1998. So as we all know, technology has greatly changed over that amount of time. And, you know, originally, it was a luxury to have a cellphone, really and truly a luxury, and now it is something that we all depend on every day. So, you know, as our technology has changed, what we need to put on telecommunications towers has also changed. So we've got some required updates that we need to do. The first one is a federal act. It's called the Spectrum Act. It was created out of, as you can see up there on the board, Section 604.9 of the Middle Class Tax Relief Act and JOG Creation Act of 2012. All of these updates from the Spectrum Act were also included in the North Carolina 160D update, so we're kind of covered both ways on that. But this takes some of our local government decisions away, quite honestly, when it comes to wireless telecommunications. It's something that we unfortunately have no choice but to accept, sent to us again from the federal government. So the 160D regulations are quite lengthy. I chose just to put in the very beginning of that part of the 160D. This is just Section 930. It's on this slide, and then also the next slide, and then there are nine more sections. So with the 160D update was quite a bit, we certainly needed Frank's assistance for that part. But as we're moving forward, you know, the wireless industry covers broadband, and we really saw during COVID-19 how desperately we needed access to broadband. It happened basically when the schools shut down. We had people trying to sit at McDonald's or at the local library to do homework with their kids. Emergency response is really important. The deployment of wireless infrastructure is critical for first responders and certainly the health and safety of our residents here in Haywood County. You know, as time goes on, very few people have a landline anymore. They're calling 911 with their cellphone, so we've got to have service. And then lastly, as we are, again, advancing in our technologies, we're seeing more and more people work from home, and they've got to have broadband to do that. So not always can you get broadband from the, you know, traditional, say Charter or something like that. Some people are using wireless for that. So moving forward, you know, as we are dependent on our wireless telecommunications towers and facilities to handle this additional traffic for the needs that we have today, we're going to have to have additional equipment on these towers because it's not just for voice anymore. It's, it's really streaming data and what's important for emergency services and work. So we have some recommended ordinance changes. Of course, we've got to include all of our regulatory changes. We also, this is a staff recommendation, we'd like to increase the standoff on the tower. So what that means is if we have a monopole tower and we have antennas that stand off that tower, our current language reads 24 inches. So we've always had a really small silhouette on our towers. But moving forward, it's just not enough space for the wireless industry to have enough antennas to do what we need to do. So we are recommending a 60-inch standoff on these antennas. We are also recommending that we allow more supporting structure to hold these antennas. In the past, our ordinance has required very minimal structure as far as support goes, and we just would like to remove that section and essentially be able to put more equipment on one tower instead of having to have more towers. And then we would also like to have secure climbing devices on towers so that maintenance personnel and those who have to climb those would just be in a safer position. The supporting framework allows that. Once they get up to the top of the tower, you know, they're able to take a lanyard and hook on to that supporting framework. So it just makes it much safer for those folks. And then lastly, just reiterating that the public safety and emergency response, whether it be something like Tropical Storm Fred or a search for someone who's lost, we really feel like these changes, in addition to the regulatory required ones, just give us a better opportunity for the future, for better coverage, et cetera. So I wanted to give you a visual of what, what would a tower look like with a 60-inch standoff. So this particular tower is not in the county's planning jurisdiction. This one is at the industrial park, kind of near the High Tech Center. Almost all of us drive past it maybe several times a day. And so this, with the changes that we've recommended, this is kind of what a tower would look like. It's not going to be the, the very small silhouette, but it's also, you know, not protruding out and looks very much like the ones that we see kind of all over the place. And using some of our technology that Joey's gotten for us, I tried to actually make a measurement. And so that is approximately 60 inches or five feet off of a tower. So if you've driven by the High Tech Center, you've, you've seen that one, and that's more like what our towers would look like in the future. So I wanted you all to have a visual for that. And just.
Now, the one at the High Tech Center, that's in the town.
Yeah, that would be Waynesville's jurisdiction, yes, sir.
So the towns do all, I'm sorry, do all the towns have their own jurisdictions?
They do.
Okay, so they all have their ordinances, and then this is for anything in the county outside the town's development?
Yeah, be the unincorporated areas. We don't do wireless telecommunications for any of the municipalities.
Right.
They each do their own. So you're probably used to seeing these kind of towers anyway, just driving around, whether it be Waynesville or Canton. You know, a lot of people see the one whenever you're getting on I-40 there at Exit 27. That tower's on Julie Drive. That's in the town of Claude, so it looks very similar to the one that I just showed you in the industrial park. But we're just recommending these changes to enhance our connectivity for the future. I don't think it's a tremendous change, but it is, it would be a small change for us. But I think a necessary one. So any other questions or thoughts?
Maybe I misinterpreted you, but that final bullet on that one page where during like Tropical Storm Fred, when emergency communications are extremely necessary, I know we lost communications with, with a cell tower we had to bring in, mobile units. Are we going to be allowed to put some of our EMS equipment? Is that going to be a requirement moving forward, or how's that going to work as far as enhancing emergency communications?
So we have always required co-locations, and in the time that I have brought a new tower to the board, the cell companies have been willing to locate equipment if we were to so choose. So it really becomes a choice of the wireless telecommunications tower owner. So we could not make that mandatory, but I have not had any issues with them offering that. We just haven't chosen to move forward with that. Yeah.
I was going to ask you, you're just sitting there just chomping at the.
They are, under the current ordinance and with the proposed ordinance, they are encouraged or required to allow co-location. The main reason we have not co-located our EMS frequencies or Sheriff's Office frequencies on a cell tower is because of the way their technology works, their towers are low on the mountains because they're trying to get out into valleys in a small radius where our stuff is on top of the mountains trying to hit a much larger radius because it requires less equipment. So there are a few places, like Chambers Mountain, for example, where there's cell towers where it could be beneficial for us to locate, but we already have the North Carolina Viper system on top of Chambers Mountain, so we're already on a tower there. But that's why we don't do it a lot now, but the option is there and it is required if we were to ever find a spot that would make sense to co-locate.
I think that makes perfect sense, Joey, and I think of frying pan tower, I think of Sugar Top, they're 5,000 feet, so, you know, a lot of coverage possibilities there, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or considerations at this point? Okay.
How many cell tower companies, like Crown Castle, do you know how many operated in our county at the present time? How many tower owner companies?
So we see Crown Castle, SBA, Verizon, trying to think. We did the little tower that's going up Balsam. Can't remember the name of those folks right now, but we seem to see, we see the same players over and over again. I'd say there's a half dozen or less most of the time. There we go. So watershed protection. This is another ordinance that's been in place for a long time, and we do have a state-required mandate for this. So March 9th, 2023, there was an updated draft water supply watershed model ordinance that was approved by the Environmental Management Commission. Once that was approved by the Environmental Management Commission, they started pushing that out to all the jurisdictions who have water supply watersheds. So the update included clarity in their definition section, the 160D amendments that you all are so accustomed to hearing about. And then also, they had always had a water supply watershed fact sheet that they would hand out, but now they have actually added that to the model ordinance, and I'll show you that in just a second. And then the biggest change that I see that's been handed to us from the model is whenever we have a cluster development, and I'll explain that a little bit more in a sec, in a second, when that option is utilized by a developer, instead of the 30-foot watershed buffer that we have in place now, it would be a 100-foot required buffer. That, that is a significant change for us. So cluster development is going to be whenever we concentrate our density into one area. Think of it as something like a planned unit development, an apartment complex, maybe a group of townhouses, something where we have high density. And so in those places, if we had a developer who chose that option, then we would, we have no choice but to require the 100 feet based on this new state model ordinance. So one of the things that I want you to remember is this is not the average single-family residence that we typically see watershed permitting for. With well and septic and a house site, most of the time, it's hard to get all that on less than a half acre, which is what are required, two units per acre is what's required by the watershed ordinance. So it would take somebody who had access to sewer to really achieve this level of density. So I don't expect there to be an immediate impact except for maybe where we have somebody who is fortunate enough to maybe have an old permitted stream discharge or something like that that would allow them to have a greater density than what we're accustomed to. So this is that fact sheet that I mentioned a second ago. This looks really scary, but let me just tell you that in Haywood County, we have a, we have two WS1 watersheds and, excuse me, we have more than two. We have Cam, Cam Allen's Creek and Rough Creek that are WS1 watersheds. None of those have any residential construction that goes on there, and we just don't see permitting for things there. In Haywood County, we don't have any of the WS2s, we don't have any fours or fives. So WS1 and WS3 of this particular fact sheet is what would apply to us. These are really things that we're already doing. Like I said, they provided this as a guidance document for a long time, and now they've just incorporated it into the ordinance. So here are our watersheds. As I said before, we have two that are WS1. We don't have any residential construction there. And then we have three that are WS3 watersheds, and that's going to be Pigeon, Campbell Creek, and Jonathan Creek. We have a critical area and then an area that we call the balance. So the critical area is within a half mile of the intake, and then the balance is going to be everything else. In our critical areas, we have a 12% impervious surface limitation, and in our balance areas, it's going to be 24%. This is not a change. This is the same density requirement that has been there, or impervious surface requirement since 1994. So yes, we do have a state mandated requirement here, and from everything that I've looked at, the big change would be for high-density development, and it has to do with that buffer from a stream. And I put a picture of Canton's intake on here with their nice new mural. So does anybody have any questions about this particular update? It's fairly straightforward. Okay, the next one is this Chapter 154, Erosion and Sediment Control. And since this one's not a PowerPoint, you may have to move it, Amy, I'm not sure. So I just started with a little graphic that is from the state website. And in Haywood County, we, of course, do erosion control for the unincorporated areas. We also do it for the town of Maggie Valley and the town of Claude. So those, that's our coverage area for this ordinance. Again, this was a state mandated model update. I didn't really see anything that changes what we do every day with respect to erosion control. They just added like clarity and definitions and 160D type updates, that sort of thing. Karen, you have anything you want to add on that one? This one is just really super straightforward.
No, I think, I think she said that right. Like I said, we consulted with Mark. Tim's out there doing this enforcement on this ordinance, so it was really kept in line with what we've been doing over the years. Most of what was involved in this was those state requirements as far as 160D and those changes. So we used a model ordinance from them, and so the wording, there's a lot of strike-throughs and changes because we wanted to match some of the wording from their model ordinance and update, but most of it, for the most part, stays the same, the core material.
Any questions about erosion control? Okay, let's check out our next one. So this is our last update for this evening, and I hope this is our last ordinance update for a while because we have spent a lot of time in these ordinances. So our slope ordinance came about in March of 2007. Unfortunately, we got this in place just before we had a big recession with respect to development projects. And so when we went through this ordinance, we just tried to update it to today's trends and the things that we're seeing at this time. I want to say that whenever you think about our slope ordinance, this applies to artificial slopes. When somebody is building an artificial slope, like for a minor or major subdivision road, it is this ordinance that requires them to have compaction testing on that. So there are not any major changes to what we do every day here, but this is not an ordinance. A lot of places have ordinances that are like density-based, like you have to run through this calculation, and it tells you how many houses you can have on a particular parcel of land. And that is not how this works at all. It is really giving the property owner all the choices about how they want to develop their land, but they just have to meet these minimum requirements of this ordinance. And at the end of the day, we're just looking for stable roads and house sites that are going to, you know, stay on the mountain. So I don't have anything particular to point out about this one, but we'll try to answer. Any questions? You have anything you want to add?
Jody or Karen, either one, out of all these, is there anything that keeps you up at night, worries on you, or is there anything that jumps out at you? Or maybe asking it another way, is there anything on here? We're going to get a ton of phone calls over.
I mean, anytime that we see changes, particularly on cell towers, that might be something, if it's, you know, something that you're kind of used to looking at, and then they come in and do a modification, and all of a sudden, instead of six antennas, it's got nine, and they stick out a little further, you know, that, that's going to be a change, and somebody may want to call about that. But if we want to have cell service and be able to move forward, we're going to have to, you know, balance out some of what the tower looks like versus our coverage.
Those same type of people will be complaining because they can't talk on their cellphone as well, so that's the way that usually gets.
Maybe they'll have to drive down, down the road to be able to call you to complain about it.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Jody, on those cell towers that you were showing that were inside the municipalities, they're already at six feet, you're right.
I don't know exactly what their requirements are, but the one that I showed you at the industrial park, the antennas that are on the top were a 60-inch standoff. Some of them stick out even further than that. Quite honestly, we've been really spoiled with our view shed and telecommunications towers because as you drive around and you go other places, to me, they always stand out to me because I'm like, gosh, they must not have an ordinance around here for, for telecom towers. So I think we've been very fortunate. The ordinance worked for many, many years. To not have to mess with it till 1998 speaks to the good work that Chris Boyd and the other folks did many years ago.
They shouldn't be complaining because they've already got, you know, in the municipalities like that one right there, so they should, it can't look no different than that, can it?
It should look very similar to the graphic that I showed you today. I thought the visual would be really important for everybody to see.
Anybody else got anything? Thank you.
I'd just like to, I'd just like to publicly thank everyone that's worked on these ordinances. Like you say, you've put in tons of work on this. It's been years since it has been done, and naturally, it was, it was very needed to come back in with compliance with federal and state regulations and things of that nature. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So would, okay, would, would any of the public like to comment on any of these ordinances? We're going to have a regular public comment session later, but does anybody want to comment on any of the three? on any of the three or four ordinances that Jody and Garen just spoke to? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period. And we'll move on to our regular public comment session. Would anyone care to address the board? If they see no one, I will move to constituent concerns. Does anyone have any constituent concerns that they want to speak to? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to administrative agency reports and presentations. We have the Pisgah Legal Services update, and we, our original speaker, James Barrett, is ill, and so we have James Gorsuch, Pisgah Legal Services Managing Attorney, will be presenting on Mr. Barrett's behalf tonight. So welcome.
Thank you. And good evening. Jim Barrett did wish he could be here this evening. He's not feeling very well, so he asked me to step in. So we just wanted to give you all a little update on Pisgah Legal Services, the work that we provide, and some of our hopes and dreams to be expanding our work. We're already operating in Haywood County, but we certainly have goals to, to increase our presence and our work here to benefit the county, all of its residents. And so we'll get started here with just sort of baseline of the mission and vision of Pisgah Legal Services, which you can see here on the slide. But Pisgah Legal Services provides civil legal aid to help low-income individuals to address their basic needs. These are folks who have civil legal issues, nothing to do with criminal cases or anything like that, that address basic needs like housing, access to healthcare, safety from abuse, some of those types of issues. And I just want to note here, come upon a study that was put out by the University of North Carolina at Greensboro that was done through 2021 and 2023, that in the state of North Carolina, more than 2 million residents qualify for assistance from legal aid organizations, over 2 million folks. And according to this research, 71% of those people will have at least one civil legal problem every year. And that can be something to do with affecting their housing, evictions, foreclosures. It can have to do with access to public benefits that they're entitled to. It can have to do with safety from abuse, all kinds of issues. But 71% of those 2 million have some need of civil legal aid each year. And that strips, outstrips the available help by a significant margin. This same study shows that while there is one private attorney in the state of North Carolina for every 367 residents, there is one legal services attorney for every over 8,000 residents. So access to the justice system and access to help for these people who need it most is severely limited. So Pisgah Legal Services operates free of charge. We do not charge any of our clients for any of our services. Our goal is to address these basic needs, to allow these individuals to escape poverty long-term, and to be able to, you know, work, to live, to participate in our communities without poverty and all of the anxiety and all of the problems that it brings. We serve low-income individuals. Almost all of our programs operate on an income cap of 125% of the federal poverty level, based on family size. For a family of four, that would be about $33,000 a year. Majority of our clients are women, many of them with children. A lot of that comes out of our domestic violence services to help in that area. And in 2023, across our service area with all 18 counties of western North Carolina, we served about 24,000 people, which was a record for us. That encompasses both legal services themselves, as well as assisting folks with enrolling, access to healthcare, and preparation of taxes. So a good bit of variety there. We are operating at the moment in all 18 counties of what we would consider western North Carolina, which is Burke County and West. I will note here, this map has grown over the years. When I started at Pisgah Legal, we were in eight counties. That was in 2017. So we've had a lot of expansion. A good bit of that has been due to the Dogwood Health Trust's desire to support healthcare access and tax assistance, to help people access healthcare, and obviously, some of the tax credits, like the earned income tax credit, the expanded child tax credit stimulus payments that came out during the COVID pandemic. So some of our services are limited in some counties. Right now, we do have an office here in Waynesville. We are not able at the moment to offer our full sort of spectrum of legal services in this county, but that is a goal that we're pursuing, looking towards some funding to allow us to do that. We're speaking with the Haywood Health Trust, some folks like that. This is just a photo of our office. It's at 419 North Haywood Street here in Waynesville. If you haven't seen it, this is really it. We're primarily doing this for tax preparation, healthcare, as well as a few other services, including, we're part of the statewide Medicaid Ombudsman Program, and we're looking to actually expand legal services. We do have an attorney who is based out of Haywood County here. Her name is Jaclyn Hilton. She works out of that office. So our work in legal services and on tax preparation, all of that, is split into some priority areas. Those include, like I said, the basic needs that allow people to, to work, to live in our communities, and to try to get themselves out of poverty long-term. Housing is one of the biggest items. Safety from abuse, those two programs are the single, are the two biggest parts of our legal services. We also do work on healthcare, income, both through tax and government benefits that folks may have a right to. We have a variety of programs, though. I won't go through this whole slide, but there's a variety of legal-related programs, children's law, community economic development to help encourage development of affordable housing and employment opportunities for folks, elder law, expulsion, and driver's license restoration, which I'll circle back to in just a moment. But a pretty wide variety of services here. And then just a little breakdown, as I said, domestic violence prevention and homelessness prevention are the two biggest items of our legal services, about 44% of our overall work in 2022. And then the rest is spread among a variety of these other programs. We perform this work through a variety of ways. Direct client services are certainly the biggest one, the one that we have the most experience with. We also have a lot of community partnerships with folks like domestic violence advocacy agencies, medical legal partnerships, a variety of those things. We do try to advocate for policy with the state and local governments where we can. And as I just mentioned, the community economic development to try to just increase the opportunities for folks to advance themselves out of a poverty situation beyond simple, direct legal services. I do just want to touch briefly on this one. This is something we've been working on developing more lately, and it's a very exciting prospect for us, but expulsion and driver's license restoration program helps low-income individuals to either expunge criminal records where it is allowed by law, this is rights that people are entitled to under existing state laws, and then to get driver's licenses where they're able, to reduce barriers to them securing stable employment, housing, education, or public benefits. You can imagine that if you are trying to get a job and you don't have access to a driver's license, that's going to be a big problem. And so we, our driver's license restoration work is a big deal. Over a million people in this state have active driver's license suspensions relating to unpaid fines, failure to appear in court, things like that. And a lot of those failure to, to pay suspensions are based on an inability, not a refusal or an unwillingness to pay. But if you don't have the money to put food on the table, then that traffic ticket's going to become a big problem for you. So these court costs, obviously, and I have worked extensively in traffic law, increasing court costs since the 90s have increased that strain significantly. So we can use, work with those people to navigate the local court systems, to navigate the DMV system, to advocate with our DAs, who are usually very willing to help, and with the courts, to help get relief for these folks, and to coordinate services to help people to overcome these barriers so they're able to work, they're able to get to school, they're able to take care of their families. This is just one example of this work. Houston, we've changed names, of course, but this is a Pisgah Legal client of Attorney Ed Treat on the right side of the photo there, who does most of this work for us. Houston is a veteran. After he left the, the military, he had some addiction problems, which led to a series of bad decisions and outcomes that affected his driver's license. And he was needing to look at getting $2,500 to get a driver's license back to be able to go to work. After he had gotten himself clean, he had a job opportunity with a local nonprofit to drive a delivery truck, or a donation truck for a, a local nonprofit, but he needed a license to do that. And so we were able to work with Houston, get his driver's license situation cleared up. And the very day that we got him his license back, he started that job. So that's just one example of the impact of that kind of work on the communities that we serve here. And so this, again, a very brief overview of what we do. As I said, we are not able, or have not been able at this moment to be providing our full spectrum of legal services here in this county, but we are working toward expanding that. And so I wanted to make sure that you all are aware of what we do, so that you know to send folks our way if, as they come to your attention, and hopefully, we'll be able to, to be doing more work here moving forward. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
What services are you not providing currently?
In Haywood County, we're, of our sort of services, we're offering medical or healthcare enrollment, tax preparation, some immigration services. There's the Healthy Opportunities Pilot, which is a part of Medicaid Transformation that is helping folks to access services beyond just basic Medicaid and healthcare. So there's a variety of programs, but some of those core programs, like housing work, domestic violence work, we're not really able to do right now.
Am I got any other questions? I know a lot of times, you know, folks don't know how to navigate the legal system, and it's like, you know, they need an attorney, and they can't, but they can't afford one. So this is a good alternative for them and solution for them to be able to, whatever issue they have, or, or court case, or whatever, they can get legal help, you know, proper legal help, and be able to kind of move on with their lives, if you will. So.
Yes, sir. I've, I've worked in both private practice and I've been at Pisgah Legal for about seven years now, and our system is not built to really navigate by yourself. And so access to an attorney can be the difference between a good outcome that you had a right to. You know, it's not, we're not trying to play games with the law here. It's things that people have a right to, and whether they can access that may depend on whether they have help.
Thank you for coming and, and giving us the, the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is introduction of employees hired in 2024, in January of 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A pretty extensive list today. So I'll go through Laura Philanga, Robert Lindsay, Daniel Jones, Jeremy Schulte, Nicholas Fedora, Jamie Lance, Serenity McCardle, Abigail Waters, Yvette Henry, Michelle Moss, Kalen Clemmons, Trinity Wimberly Mann, Jordan Smith, Morgan Childers, Mallory Martin, Leslie Quintero Mahia, Jordan Arshamboat, Emery Sheena Weiss, Sierra Buchanan, Kristy Patton, and Sarah Horn. Those are our new employees for January.
Okay. The IMC, is that intake?
That's Income Maintenance Case Worker, I believe.
At?
At HHSA.
Right. Okay. And then SW intern?
Social Work Intern.
Okay. All right. Just, just so people know it out there. Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any other comments? Appreciate these folks coming on board. I know we needed several of these. So appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does any of the commissioners have any questions on the five items on the consent agenda? You're hearing that on entertaining motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I might get motion.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move to the regular agenda. Number, item number one is to request approval of a resolution authorizing acceptance of donation of a custom-made desk for the Haywood County Sheriff. We have our sheriff here today, Sheriff Bill Wilkie. Welcome, Bill.
Good afternoon, and thank you. I think most of you have read the, the letter that I sent each of you regarding the desk. And just to very quickly summarize that, the gentleman standing to my right is Matthew Sarals. I've known him and his family for many years. And I presented him with an idea shortly after becoming elected, that we put a desk for every sheriff that followed my administration into the office. And just to, to put it succinctly, he went way over the top. It is a very large and unique piece of furniture that he put, what, 10 months into, Matthew? And it's made from wood here in Haywood County. There's a history to it. There's a badge on the front of it that's very ornate, that is the Haywood County Sheriff's Office badge, and there are a number of, of things about it. There are some inscriptions and some drawings from kids in the elementary schools here in Haywood County. So when they become adults, they can kind of remember the time that they contributed to that. So all these were ideas that Matthew put together. And I just wanted to, number one, make sure that he was recognized, and number two, make sure we understand that this is a gift to the sheriff's office for future generations of people that will sit behind that desk. As you open the drawers, there are scriptures inside, encouraging scriptures for sheriffs who will likely have to make some, some tough decisions. So all of this was presented by Matthew as an idea, and, and I just wanted to, to recognize him and thank him. It, I don't, I don't even want to talk about the money end of this. I don't, I don't know what he's got in it, but I'll tell you that the, the desk is what, 40 inches by seven feet, and it's three inches thick with a live walnut edge emblazoned in God We Trust on the front. And I think, what, 750 pounds is, they had to bring it in pieces and put it in, and it's, I just wanted to recognize him for that donation and the things that he's done for the county and for the office going forward. So would you like to say anything, Matthew? Just, sorry, don't mean to put you on the spot.
It was just, it was built as a legacy for Haywood County, for the offices of the sheriff.
It's beautiful.
So, in my understanding what the resolution is, it now becomes county property or sheriff's office property that goes on the property book and the things that, on the register of things that have been donated or, or part of county property. So.
So Matthew, do you, do you do this for a living, make furniture, or?
More or less.
Matthew does a little bit of everything. I've known Matthew and his family.
I'm trying to get the word out.
Oh, yeah. I know Matthew and his family. His parents are here, and his wife, and great family. And I know that Matthew does a, a lot of things. And one thing I do know about Matthew, when he does something, he does it right. You don't have to worry about it not being right. So thank you, Matthew, for the donation. Definitely an honor to receive that. I know, I know I've seen the sheriff several times, and he keeps telling me I need to come see his desk. I mean, he's very proud of it. So thank you, Matthew, for, for the donation.
Thank you. He also took from every piece of wood, different kind of wood, and he made coasters with an emblazoned Haywood County Sheriff's Office badge on it, and there's a little kit and some bowls, and just some other really neat things that he used from scraps that, that also go with it, that are just really, really neat items. So that was it. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Okay, so entertaining motion, we approve item one of the regular agenda.
I make a motion, we approve item one to accept the desk.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's, that's unanimous. Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Sheriff. I've been there and, and looked at the desk, and it is, it is, it's pretty magnificent, really.
Spectacular.
So I could see that being around in 500 years or something, you know? Because it'll last probably longer than that. Okay, item number two of the regular agenda is to request approval of a resolution of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners of the County of Haywood, North Carolina, authorizing the negotiation of an installment financing contract and providing for certain other related matters here too. And we have our county manager, Bryant Moorehead, to speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, we had the public hearing. I had a couple of speakers that, that asked for some more information. If we have just a second, I'll, I'll review some notes and kind of try to explain some of that. As of June 30th, 2023, we had a total outstanding principal debt of just under $30 million, 29.6 million. It was structured, 16.3 million is, is the county's debt, 6.2 related to the school system, 2.7 million for the college, and an additional 4.3 million for the college, but that's paid by the, the Health Foundation. So all in all, we have about 29.6 million dollars worth of debt. The proposed debt that's before you today is, is almost $28 million. We would structure this as a 20-year term with level principal payments. Currently, we've been using estimates of, of about 5%, but in the current market, we hope we can beat 4.5%, maybe even better when we go to market, should this move forward, with a proposed sell date of March 13th. In 2025, the way it's currently structured, we would have an interest-only payment during construction. construction, and that's a 24-month construction time period from the day that the contractor, if hired, would start. We would have an own interest-only payment in 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 '25 and a full year of principal and interest payments starting in '26. Based on estimates, in 2025, we would have a payment of $1,663,000, and in '26, that payment would would go to a 2.12 million. If the project were to go forward, we could, in 2025, absorb the debt payment, that interest-only payment, out of fund balance, and then we would have to adjust the budget accordingly in in outline years in 2026, when that full year of principal and interest payment hits. To give you some idea, 2026 payment of a little over 2 million or 2.1 million dollars equates to about 1.5 cents on the tax rate. That does not include operating, that's debt only. It would be expected, if with the the timeline and the FY '27 budget, that we would have some operating costs, as Commissioner Ramey asked at the last time, in 2027. I I think that answers most of the questions, and and a lot of it is just based on estimates and our our best understanding of the market. We'll have more hard figures March 13th, if bonds actually go forward.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Bryant?
Oh, as far as questions go, really, other than just to clarify that this vote tonight is just to move forward to go to the LGC to check on the financing piece of it, is that correct?
Correct. It's the LGC's first box to check that the the Board of Commissioners approves the project and they deem it necessary to finance it because we don't have $30 million worth of cash to 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 buy it. So it it's basically, the board understands there's a need and it's in our best interest to finance it.
Speaking of the need, I know that we've had two separate sheriffs that have have asked for a jail addition, and I know that everybody I've talked to from a law enforcement standpoint tells us the same thing. I know several of my fellow commissioners has had jail visits this week, and I'm sorry, Captain, but I didn't get up there to see the jail, but I have been there before, so I I sort of understand, you know, the the needs there. And I I think we're all in agreement, my personal conversations with, I think, all of you, is that we definitely need the jail addition. But what I would like to do or ask for after the vote tonight, if it passes, is that at some point, the county manager, the finance director, commissioners, the sheriff, and whoever you choose, sit down and have a workshop so that we can talk through all the needs. And $28 million is just a lot, I think, for 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 me personally, and I think, as I speak to most of these gals and guys up here, it's a little hard to swallow, except for Mr. Enzi. I think you've been on many big projects before, but this is all of our first time. So I think we're all all in agreement that we need it, just like to ask for possibly a workshop if it passes tonight. And I know I've spoke to you about that, and you said that was fine, so, and I'll leave it with that.
If if we agree on some dates, we can get that scheduled right away, or we can work as staff tomorrow to propose some dates through the chair and 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 get something scheduled before the March 4th meeting, if if that is the direction the board would like to go.
Yeah, and we 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 have had some big votes before, but I'm just looking at one right now across the way there, and and that that project was approved and constructed in 2004, and then it's paid for, so. And it was a big vote. It was, the Justice Center in the parking deck was $23 million, and we did that, and now it's paid for. We did the Law Enforcement Center, which was $12 million, and now it's, I think, will be paid for in about a year.
2026.
2026, so it's almost paid for. And we remodeled the courthouse. I think it's well down the road to being paid for it. It was almost 10 million. We redid the DSS building, it was about 12 million. Yeah, it's, you know, we've made payments on it and it's, you know, probably more than, probably around 30% paid for, so as far as the payments go. So, yeah, I have done a lot of, a lot of stuff, or a lot of buildings, and I, there's several more I could go on, but we, basically, we went ahead and and got the projects completed. Once we got them completed, you know, it just made Haywood County a better place to live, to have the buildings that we need for our employees to work in, it made it safer for them. I know the the court system was meeting all over the county, and and the clerk of court was having to take the papers all over the county, so we basically got that consolidated. And and I just, when I visited the the jail, I saw the need there. I was, I had visited the jail a long, long time ago, and now it's, you know, kind of to capacity. I know the sheriff's shared some info with us, and it basically showed that he's at capacity about all the time. And so he's, I guess it's a constant battle between you guys to try to figure out how to get people, where to get them, and then unfortunately, when we have to take them out of the county, we have that safety issue for our deputies and and travel expenses and everything, which I don't think is good, you know, to be doing that, so. But I I do see the need, and and like I say, our debt now is 20, $29 million, and I just rattled off several projects that we did, and the reason our debt is low right now is because we made those decisions then, and we did it, we got it done, and and now the county's better off. We've got these buildings, and they're almost paid for, the majority of them, and and it just gave us a really good buildings and infrastructure that that give our employees a place to work, so.
I I think, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and I'm glad you guys took care of that earlier on, so we didn't have to. But one thing that I want to do during these workshops, you know, is sit down, and I think all of us at the same table can understand the needs that are there, and not only that, look at how we finance it, you know, we can learn what our interest rate will be, see how much we can pull out of our fund balance, what we're all comfortable with, and and we can go from there. But I just feel like, felt like it'd be best, as long as everybody's in agreement with that, that we sit down and have a workshop, so.
So let me clarify, you're wanting, you're proposing we have a workshop before the March 4th meeting? Is that correct?
We'll pretty much have to before the 4th, is that right?
I I think if, practically speaking, we meet with the LGC on March 5th, should this go forward, so it, we we probably need to know before we go to Raleigh, right? So I'd like to try to get something scheduled no later than the next week, so so we have plenty of time to to go through it and and change direction if that's the board's wishes.
I think it's real important that we, since I've been here, the three years that I've been here, I've, you know, it's, the project has has, I don't want to say changed, but we've had issues with the site, the the cost has definitely increased from when I first came in, came to the board. And I think anytime we are, you know, we're we're elected to be stewards of the people's money, and I just think it's important that we vet the process and we we ask all the deep questions again and do it in just an open setting so that everybody can hear. So I think that, just to be clear, if we vote tonight, we're, what you said was that we're agreeing to the project and then searching for financing, correct?
You're agreeing that there's a need for the project and and?
For a project, okay.
Financing, yes. But I I should have stated upfront, this is the first resolution, it is non-binding. So if you were to change your mind, the LGC wouldn't understand. It's it's not saying that it's going forward, this is non-binding.
We certainly want to create or continue to have a very safe community, and that was one of the questions I asked today when I was at the sheriff's office, is how does this impact the safety of our community going forward? So I'd just like to, you know, just like to have that conversation so we can ask all those tough questions.
Make sure that what we're agreeing on today is nothing but just to move forward with the, to check about financing and the, that we know we need jail, but this is not binding us down to the 28 million right now, right?
That's that's the estimate, but there's nothing binding you to future votes tonight.
This is not agreeing on the 28, right?
It's it's agreeing that that we've brought you estimates of the cost of the project, so, and and, but it's not, it's not you saying that you'll definitely support future votes on this project.
But if if we do this tonight, does that mean we're going to go ahead and line the financing up?
We're moving in that direction just because of the timeline, but we also understand that at the last minute, things could change.
I just, I always want to make sure that I'm not agreeing to go ahead and and get the financing for the 28, or 27, 5 million, whatever it is, without knowing exactly what we're going to?
That would be another vote. That would be after we sell, if we sell on on March 13th. You'll have, you'll have documents to approve afterwards.
I I agree with Brandon. I think we need to have a workshop to work this, you know, out and see if, make sure everybody agrees on what the needs are and what the price is going to be and what the, you know, what, how it's going to affect the county and help the county, and, because anytime you, we got to go up on taxes like that, it don't make people happy. And I want them to know for sure what's what's happening before we do anything like that.
Bryant, do you have any indication that rate, the rate would be less than 4.5? I know you had mentioned a number a little less than that, so.
Yes, I I really do hope that we can beat that, but it it's all depends on the rating we get from the agencies and the market, you know, basically, almost not quite a month out. Right now, we're using 5% as our estimates. I think we can beat that and beat 4.5, but if I could predict interest rates, I would probably have retired several years ago, so.
So, are we, are we going to have a workshop? That's what I'm hearing. So could we go ahead and, while we're all here, you want to do it next week, could we go ahead and set a date and a time? Is that feasible to do right now? Save a lot of backtracking.
There there's some folks that I would like to line up from the Noi Construction and also Mosley, our architects. If we're going to have a work session, I'd like to see if everyone could be here, because you may have questions, you know, that that Mr. Walker's here tonight, but some of the questions might be from Mosley, so we we can throw out some dates, but I I would like to make sure that those folks can be here, whatever we pick.
I can tell you, I have, I'm scheduled to be out of town Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Not making it hard or anything, but just take the whole middle of the week out.
Sheriff, did you want to say anything?
I'll make good work and pick the date.
Okay.
Sounds like to accommodate Commissioner Best, it's either going to have to be Monday or Friday. Is that correct?
We're next to you.
I could do Tuesday after Tuesday morning early, I guess. Monday or Tuesday or Friday.
We will make work whatever this board wants, but I would say Monday's a better shot than Friday, if it's going to be in the evening. Monday, the 26th. If that's the direction of the board that we should, I'll I'll try to pull one together for the afternoon of Monday, the 26th, and I'll, this this room sometimes doesn't work for kind of question and answering and tables, so we might see if we could get something at at Paragon, and then we'll have to work with how far we have to notice it. So we have a little bit of work to do, but we'll shoot for Monday, the 26th, whatever time the board decides what.
2:00 PM would be good. We've got a meeting at 5:30. Here I do, I've got another board meeting, 5:30 Monday evening.
Shoot for 2 on the 26th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Meeting 2 at maybe 4 or 5 on 26.
Okay, you got it. Okay.
Always on board. We'll we'll make it happen.
You want to get somebody from the architect?
I I'll I'll send that email tonight and find out. Yes, sir.
I would hope they would accommodate us.
I imagine they will.
I would hope so, please.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, can I have a motion for item two of the regular agenda?
Make a motion to approve item two of the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move to item three of the regular agenda, is approval of a memorandum of understanding between Haywood County and Haywood County Advancement Foundation. We have Haywood County Advancement Foundation Chair Patrick Bradshaw and Community and Economic Director David Francis. Welcome, David. Welcome, Patrick.
Good evening, commissioners. I've got two agenda items that I'm very excited to bring before the board this evening. As you know, back in January of last year, we met and, you know, was discussing, you know, our our next steps. We've had a Haywood, you know, County Economic Development Commission, you know, the commission became the Economic Development Council at the Chamber of Commerce in 2014. And then due to the inactivity of COVID, we, you know, disbanded the council, and at that time, we began working with Haywood Advancement Foundation, who was their longest, you know, serving economic development arm in Haywood County since the late 80s. And, you know, through Patrick's leadership, and I want to thank Ronnie Leatherwood, Danny Wingate, Dave Blevins, who were the legacy members of this organization, for working with us and, you know, turning over a, you know, a new leaf, and it was critically got more important, you know, after March 6th, you know, to get the band back together. And so, but it's been a pleasure to work with Patrick and, you know, we've, Patrick will bring you up the details of, you know, how we've gotten started and what we're, you know, working through in our proposals as we go forward. But I'd like to introduce the the new Chair of Haywood Advancement Foundation, Patrick Pacheco.
Thank you, David, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Appreciate the time this evening. As David mentioned, I've been on and off of Haywood Advancement Foundation, not since its infancy. I just graduated high school, I think, when it was birthed in about 89 or 90, but have seen, you know, it somewhat at work, I've seen it be somewhat idle as an organization. But curiously, just pre-COVID, as I think we hang that moniker on a lot of things we talk about these days, you know, there was some interest to kind of get some rejuvenation there, insert COVID into the picture, and like a lot of things, it went went off to pasture for a little while. But like I say, over about the past year, just the recognition of a number of needs, board members that had, you know, kind of thought they maybe weren't even part of that board anymore, and in fact, some of us were not part of, we thought we were, after we dug down in the bylaws. Like I say, through the good work of David, Ronnie Leatherwood, Danny Wingate, myself, we kind of dug in. Counsel Mr. Queen advised us that, yeah, it was actually a short list that survived in this thing, but we kind of re-envisioned what those ideals might look like. And really, you know, the the bar stool, the legs of the bar stool, if you are, as Haywood Advancement, is to aid Haywood County government in efforts to recruit, retain, and expand business, any industry, other job creation. We've done small loans, we've looked at folks along the way over the years that couldn't get a traditional loan for a bank, from a bank, and so we stood in those shoes as Haywood Advancement, you know, and and served in that banking role, if you will. We don't have a ton of money today, but we're pretty, pretty pivotal, if you will. We can, we can act somewhat quicker, I think, than, let's say, county government can, for instance, so. So we want to be that aid, you know, and then again, improving the well-being of the county is another, one of the foundational aspects. Implement long-range planning of the county in so, in so much as we can, you know, help that and other municipalities, addressing workforce housing, economic development, infrastructure needs, you know, these, these are the things that we kind of, you know, look to. And we have, previously, our board makeup consisted of a fair number of elected officials and then some folks from the business community. I would say that it is still a table of community leaders, although there are not any elected leaders, if I'm correct, at that table, and I don't know that any that are running for office actively. But I think we have a good mix, a good blend, you know, we have industry, we have education, we have agriculture, we have banking, you know, a number of professions represented, and I think, you know, that we could hopefully be of of benefit, you know, if if that came together. So, again, So, again, reeling back, there had been developed a memorandum of understanding. And this document's been around at least probably three or four years. But one, at our first meeting in late two thousand and twenty-three, our board actually affirmed our, our portion of that. And I presume, is this part of their packet, David? Okay, so the memorandum of understanding for Haywood Advancement Foundation and Haywood County. I will save you my reading of that if you, unless you so choose to hear it in that way, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, at this point, I'll certainly pause questions, thoughts, um, and appreciate your comments.
Anybody have anything? I've been around a long time, too, and watched, and I've seen the use, you know, the good work that it's done. And, um, I think early on, we did a lot of work, and then probably in the last ten, ten years, it's not been as much because of the recession that we had gone through, and probably for the last twelve, thirteen, fourteen years, so. Once Deco was done, that was kind of it for a while, so.
Was this memorandum of understanding, is this a revision of the one you had previously, or is this new?
This effectively new. To my knowledge, I don't think there was an MOU between the county and Haywood Advancement. Haywood Advancement, for some number of years, kind of lived on an island. Mr. Quine, you?
There, there was a, there was a couple of different documents that sort of set out bylaws, things like that. They, they, but nothing that was explicit that, that laid out the new relationship between the two. So, you really can think about this as, as an original document. We really, I, I, I looked at the, the previous paperwork, and it was just, time it all passed it all by. It, it was, it was, a lot of it was so old and so out of date. We just started with a blank sheet of paper. That's, that's my text that you've got in front of you.
And I think our organization just looks at it from Haywood Advancement's perspective, just as kind of that, let's say, cooperative olive branch to say, hey, we're, we're here to help, if you will. Let us know how we can help you. We anticipate that, you know, specific projects may require other things to go along with or accompany them. But we just felt like it'd be appropriate to have a starting place to say, hey, we're, we're here in an effort of cooperation. If we can be of help, call on us.
Well, I certainly hadn't been around as long as our chairman, but I've al- always heard of the good work that the Haywood Advancement Foundation has performed, the Deco project being probably number one.
Yeah.
But anytime you have a, a group of people with backgrounds, the professional background that you have on this board, it's certainly be an asset for any future development or use, use your group's expertise to help guide the county. And I appreciate that.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I entertain a motion. We approve item three of the regular agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, and then the next one, thank you, Patrick, for coming out tonight. The next, the number four is approval of a Haywood Strategic Listening Post and Report Agreement and Approval for County Manager to Execute All Related Documents. So, we have David Francis back.
Thank you. Sorry, I've been under weather, so I'm a little bit hoarse, but I'll pony up here and get through this. The, you know, one of the things that, you know, after the, you know, the meal closure, you know, a lot of people have lots of opinions on what to do next. You know, we, you know, you know, vasted, you know, received from, you know, other elected boards, from, you know, other, people around the community. And so, we, we started looking around about what's the next steps? What are, what are we gonna do, you know, after the meal? You know, what, how are we gonna, you know, tackle this? So, you know, the first things that, you know, that, you know, that we did, you know, we, you know, you know, made, tried to make sure that there was a soft landing for, you know, the employees of the meal. And then, you know, working to the next steps about, you know, what's gonna happen with the meal property. And, you know, working, keep working and working. But one, you know, but I started looking about, you know, the, you know, Strategic Economic Development Plan, you know, you know, for, for the whole county. So, we started thinking about doing a, you know, request for proposal. And looked at, and we looked at other communities and, you know, you know, digressed in, you know, to how, how they did, how they responded. And then, you know, and these RFPs, you know, but, you know, came, you know, very, you know, its own wild, you know, large document. And then we started looking at that cost as well, too, you know, how, how that, you know, was gonna affect, you know, us as, too. And it came back to, we need to hear first about what people are thinking. Especially, you know, the stakeholders that have a vested, you know, interest in the county. So, we came back to, you know, just doing a, you know, a listing session or a listing post. You know, um, and, and so, we, you know, honed down on that, you know, listening. And then, you know, and using that as a guide as we tackle the next three to five years. And so, the, when we started putting together a, you know, a list of, you know, who, you know, so we got elected members, people from agriculture, and, you know, and we took another step as well, too. We're gonna be listening to law enforcement, you know, you know, as you all discussed the jail earlier. So, you know, we're gonna be listening to our sheriff and our police chiefs here as well, because they are, you know, as important of economic development as anybody else, because, you know, safe communities, you all mentioned, is very important to, to all of us. So, ma- you know, listening to manufacturing, listening to healthcare, listening to nonprofits. What do nonprofits see? As you heard, you know, the gentleman up here from the Pisgah Legal. So, listening to a whole wide range of, of people and organizations to give us a guide as we go forward. So, the, um, I don't know if you remember, but the, uh, county and the town of Canton received, uh, five hundred thousand from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, two hundred and fifty thousand from Dogwood Health to help with these next steps as we think through, as we move forward after the meal closure. So, uh, through, that, that money is with W N C Communities or Western North Carolina Communities. And, uh, so they, you know, out of that money, fifty thousand of, of that is paid for that. Sixty-three hundred is coming from the Haywood County Chamber, you know, to pay for this. So, that, that was, I thought, you know, that's a, you know, a good way that we can utilize those funds. And it gives us a document that we can use, you know, as we go forward after the closure. So, okay, uh, you have any questions?
David, could you restate the funding? I, I didn't hear you. Could you just restate that?
Restate the?
The fund, the funding.
Funding, okay, yeah, the funding. So, uh, Blue Cross, Blue Shield gave, gave five hundred thousand. Dogwood Health gave, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand for, to the county and the town to use for, you know, how, how we move forward past the meal closure. So, the fifty thousand of that, of these funds is coming from, uh, from the W N C Communities where the money's housed. And sixty-three hundred's coming from the Haywood County Chamber. Okay, you're welcome.
Do you have a question? Okay, I entertain a motion. We approve item four of the regular agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, the next three items, and we'll have Christian up here, uh, is to request approval of a budget amendment for the sheriff, eighty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars to appropriate fund balance for North Carolina DPS grant funds received in unspent in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two for the purchase of the Linco Bearcat armored vehicle.
Good evening. Yes, way back in FY twenty-two, we received eighty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety for the purpose of, of paying for a portion of the Bearcat. Of course, the Bearcat wasn't ready, so those funds just rolled back into fund balance.
Okay, I have a motion to approve item five of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, item number six is to request approval of a budget amendment for the sheriff, ninety-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars to appropriate fund balance for drug forfeiture funds collected in previous years. Funds will be used to cover the balance of purchase, the price of the Bear, Linco Bearcat armored vehicle. Funds were previously, uh, be, uh, Board of Commissioner approved in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. So, that's pretty, pretty self-explanatory.
Yep, the exact same thing. The Bearcat wasn't ready. We had already approved these funds, and so they went back to fund balance.
So, can I have a motion for that? Item number six of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, item number seven is to request approval of a budget amendment for PSAP Fund twenty-three, one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars to appropriate fund balance previously approved in fiscal year twenty-three for the nine-one-one backup center upgrades. And the project was approved by the state PSAP board as an eligible expense. So, what is PSAP?
Public Safety Answering Point. I remembered it this time. All these acronyms.
I know, yeah. Okay, and that's, go ahead, Christian.
Yes, um, this is the upgrade, the backup nine-one-one center that we will use for overflow in case of emergencies, those kind of things. This was taken to the PSAP board back in FY twenty-three and approved. Um, we had the funds budgeted in that, um, special revenue fund twenty-three. Of course, we didn't get everything done, so they rolled back into fund balances, as the story goes. So, we just need to re-appropriate those funds.
Is there a motion to approve item seven?
Make a motion to approve item seven.
Okay, I'm a second there.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. And item number eight of the regular agenda is to request approval of a budget amendment for E nine-one-one Fund twenty-three, forty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars to appropriate fund balance of the E nine-one-one fund to cover a portion of the replacement of the nine-one-one center consoles. This project was approved by the PSAP board. Go ahead.
Yes, this is not a previously approved fund balance rollover item. This was, the project was bal- uh, budgeted in Fund eleven in the general fund. Shanda took it back to the PSAP board and asked if we could use some of our PSAP funds to pay for a portion of this. And at that time, they did approve of forty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine of the ninety-six thousand total project to be used for, um, the console replacements.
And that, those taxes come from your mobile phone bill?
Yep, that's the, the nine-one-one surcharge on your cell phone bill.
So, if you ever wonder what that tax is going for, this is it. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. We approve item eight of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Only discussion I have is that our number one in the state nine-one-one department is well-represented here tonight, Shanda Morgan. Number one in the state, right?
Not second, number one, right? Second's the first loser in.
And, uh, I appreciate your work on this, too, China. Thank you for it. Okay. Well, I got messed up. Did we have a motion in a second?
Boarding got a motion in a second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, item number nine of the regular agenda is to request approval of a budget amendment, debt service, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars to appro- appropriate fund balance to pay off these old cardiac monitors that were previously budgeted in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. And that kind of says it all, too.
Yes, yes. Um, we approved, or we budgeted these funds in FY twenty-three. We did not receive the payoff invoice, so we couldn't process it. Once again, funds rolled back into fund balance. That's the story of the night.
Okay.
Just housekeeping, housekeeping.
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve item number nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
You won tonight. You had all the, you had the most. But she's number one tonight, Brandon. Okay, appointments. Uh, first item in appointments is to request approval of an appointment, one position by vote to the Haywood County Community Board of Trustees, fulfilling an unexpired term through May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-six. Wait, Frank. So Frank's gonna pass out the ballots. We'll vote for that. Yes, so we interviewed these applicants, uh, either this time or last time. And we, they were both, they were all quality candidates, and I appreciate everyone applying. We wish, we told all of them, we wished we could, uh, put all of them on there, but we can't.
It's probably one of the best, best overall groups of any board that, uh, applicants were just fantastic, and it was probably one of the best groups that I have encountered since being seen as a commissioner, and like Chairman Hensley said. Each, each, you could have just closed your eyes and picked one, and the Haywood Community College Board would have been very pleased to have them. So, thank you all for applying.
You have elected Ed Brown, the third, to the, uh, Haywood County Community College Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Okay, item number two is to request approval of two appointments by vote. One position representing the town of Waynesville and one position representing the town of Canton to the Haywood County TDA Board or Tourism Development Board.
You've elected Chuck Dixon and Gail Mull to the two positions, one representing the town of Waynesville and one representing the town of Canton, to the Haywood TDA Board.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Okay, the next, uh, appointment's number three is to request approval of appointment of five regular and one alternate, alternate position by vote to the Haywood County Board of Equalization and Review. Judy, will you come up here? Judy Hickman. Well, Frank, this is gonna take a minute, I think, so. We also have to appoint, after we get, well, yeah, after we get done with the vote, we'll need to nominate a chair and vice chair with, with a motion and a second, so. But Judy, do we need, you can go on. Do we need to, uh, do we need to set the, the, how much we're gonna pay them, that amount tonight?
I believe it was the last year that you reset those amounts. The, um, chair receives one-thirty, and each member receives one-ten. So, unless you want to change that, um, if you change it, a resolution has to be sent in to the Department of Revenue.
Okay, so you.
We, we did increase it last year.
We did it last year. You did increase it. It was either the last year or the year before.
Go ahead.
Okay, that's what I was wondering about, so, okay. And then, uh, have you spoken to any of the members of the E and R Board, the past members?
I have not.
Okay.
They were in last week for, um, a hearing, but I, I haven't spoke to them about this upcoming board.
Okay, and that, and that hearing was for, from last year's?
It was.
Do you feel like we're pretty up to the plow with, uh, compensation? I mean, how, how do you feel about the current compensation after we increased it last year?
The last time that you increased it, um, I had sent out something to some of our surrounding neighbors, and we're, we're pretty much in line with them.
Okay, okay. Well, if we decide to make a change, we can do that sometime in the future, anytime, right? Okay.
In case we got another question.
Okay.
It'll probably take a minute for this, or two, or three, or four.
Actually, you might want to help Frank over there. He's struggling.
No, it's complicated, is what it is. When I looked at the way we had to vote for that, I thought it's going to take a while. Kind of one of those things, when you announce something, the toothpaste is out of the tube, and you can't put it back in there.
Judy, is there anything interesting you want to tell us about your office while we're waiting on Frank?
We're just staying very busy.
Very busy.
We are. We just ended our listing period. We sent out approximately seventeen thousand listing forms, so we're in the process of starting to appraise and do the data entry and all that, so it'll take us up until August to get that done.
Just to note, the, if you get one of those listings, you have ten days. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, you have-
Once you get one of those listing notices, you have ten days if you don't agree. Is that correct?
Well, once you receive the bill, because that'll be your first notice of value-
Okay.
-on personal property.
On personal property.
Once you receive the bill, you have thirty days from the date of the notice.
Okay, all right.
How, just for the, the folks that are watching this, Manfred, how often does this board meet?
We didn't have a whole lot of appeals last year. They, I think last year they met about six days, and then, of course, they have to come back in towards the end of the year for personal property.
Okay. What were they meeting on last week?
Blue Ridge.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's right. They trying to get out of there, everything?
Was this past year in an average of what we've seen previous? Because there was, you know, the last reevaluation, we didn't have as many appeals as we thought we would, right?
We really didn't. We thought we would have a lot of appeals, but we didn't have as many as we thought we would. But some of the other counties seen the same thing. I think they were expecting more, and I think it's just people are looking around and seeing what property's selling for, and it's just hard to dispute that.
Can you tell us how, how far above the values are now? Is that-
We're at sixty-two percent market value.
Sixty-two percent above what, or-
Below.
Below.
Below what the tax card is, so, again, I caution people out there who have estates, that are selling estates from a deceased loved one, especially if you're out of state, be wise to contact a realtor. It would be wise to contact a realtor instead of some scam artist that comes up and wants to give you a tax card. Because we're not doing our elderly people and some people service by not having the proper evaluation on a tax card. I've heard some very disturbing stories lately.
Yeah, and we do, we encourage people to take a look at your property record card, because it has all of the information regarding your property on that card. If you see something that's incorrect, we encourage, you know, someone to come in and sit down, and we'll be more than happy to go over it with you, because we want that data to be correct.
Absolutely. Because a lot of people put a lot of trust in what's on that tax card value, and especially people who have heirs who live out of state, they just want to get rid of it, and, uh, there's some bad examples out there right now. So I think, I would advise everybody to get an appraisal, or get a realtor to handle that property, because it has sixty-two percent is unheard of, and so, just a word of caution.
Yes. You have voted to elect for the five regular seats on the Board of Equalization and Review, Billy Case, Evelyn Cooper, Jimmy Lee Flynn, Margaret Ruff, and Jonathan Sears. As the alternate position on the Board of Equalization and Review, you have elected Stephanie Parkins. Now, that's based upon the fact, and there's no explicit way of counting this, but there, there were other persons who got votes for being an alternate, but all of them got elected as regular members. So they're not available to be an alternate. So this is the only person who wasn't elected as a regular member, got elected as a alternate. So as, in, in the words of Boss Daly from Chicago, "I don't care how you vote, I just get to count it." Okay?
So- What, what matters is who counts the votes, that's what you're saying.
That is correct, and, and that's, that's my interpretation about the only method you can use.
Well, that was a very thorough explanation.
Well, okay, so, I just told him, I said, "We probably should vote the five, and then let us all vote for alternate, so we know who's not," you know?
Well, you can, you, you absolutely could, absolutely, and I thought for a minute that that may be, that we'd have a second vote. Now, if we did a second vote, then what you would do is you would have a, and, and there's no, there's no rule that we have established that establishes how you do this. I did it by the method I just explained. But if you wanted to take a revote on those folks who were, those folks who were not selected as a regular, and therefore were available to, to, to be voted on for the alternate position, then you would have two, two persons that you could choose between for that alternate position. You might want to do that now, rather than that method I just described, which was an interpretation.
That's okay.
Carry on, you say. Very well, just as Boss Daly said.
Okay, all right, Judy, so we've got to appoint a chair and a vice chair.
I'd like to-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, so, if, so like, would Jimmy Flynn be avai, he was the chair and Evelyn was the vice chair. So are they still, I guess, well, we just voted them in, so I guess they would be available, so. Okay, so I need a, a motion and a second for each position, or can we just?
Well, I, I think everything's been working fine. Is that correct? So I'd go ahead and make that motion to appoint Jimmy Flynn as the chairman and Evelyn Cooper as the vice chair.
I'll second that.
Anybody, any other discussion on that? Okay, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Does he want to, okay, all right. So that takes care of all that, right? That was complicated. I'm glad that you knew how to do that, Frank. That's good. I think I, I think I followed you on that, so. Okay, and that was item, uh, okay, I'm done. That was item three.
We got one more.
No, one more, it was chairman.
I was thinking, yeah, I was thinking that I, I thought I got ahead of myself. Okay, number four is to request approval of the reappointment of Leslie Smathers, Stephen Leatherwood, and Martha Mills, each to a third-year, three-year term. An appointment of Sean Simpkins, Patricia Taylor, Tammy Francis, and Michael Moody, each to their initial two-year term on the Agriculture Advisory Board. And Frank, I mean Frank McBreton, did you want to?
The only thing that I would add is that the Ag Board sent over these names requesting that the term limits for the new applicants are a two-year term, with the hope that they have staggered terms going forward. That's the only thing I would add.
Okay. Yeah.
Any board, that's wise.
I, I would say that I have worked with a lot of these people in different capacities, and I would say that they are very good, great representatives of the agricultural community, and would serve well in any capacity. Yeah, I'll be glad to make the motion. I said, "You don't want me to read all that."
I'll second it, and one comment. Pardon me?
Oh, go ahead. She, she's just making a motion for item four. You don't have to read it all.
Yeah, I was making the motion.
Go ahead, Tom.
Okay, yeah.
I, I second it. Just one note, you know, sometimes we have some extraordinary Haywood County accomplishments, and I, I thought it interesting that Mr. Simpkins has been put here for us to approve a two-year term. I know him personally, and he actually had an award-winning bull that sold at the Clemson Test Station two Saturdays ago. It was a fantastic Angus bull, and it was like the top of the, top of the show. And Mr. Simpkins is an accomplished Angus cattleman, and he's made, he made Haywood County proud, right there down in South Carolina at Clemson University Bull Sale.
So the question is, is how much did he get for it?
I'm not sure he'd like for me to tell that. It's several thousand dollars.
Okay. Well, it's a public sale, so, okay.
Yeah, they can look it up. I, I've got a number in my head, but Mr. Chairman, I don't know exactly, and I don't want to misspeak, because it's a pretty large number.
But you, you didn't buy it, though, right?
No, no, it's beyond my reach.
Okay, okay. Okay, all right, now, so that concludes the regular agenda, or the-
Bull.
Oh, all in favor say aye for number four.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, sorry. You got me off track, Tom.
I threw you off track again, I'm sorry.
Talking about a bull, see what I had?
That's a lot of bull.
Shooting the bull.
Shooting the bull. Start talking about bull.
Okay, well, we need to go to closed session, and we'll be in closed session when we enter the chambers in the back, but the closed session is per North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A three, which is attorney-client privilege per North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A one, to protect confidential or privileged information as defined in North Carolina General Statute one thirty-two, one seven, point seven. I'll entertain a motion. We go to the closed session.
I get motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we'll go to, we'll be in closed session when we enter the chambers in the back. Ah, okay, we'll go to, we'll be in closed session when we enter the chambers in the back.
We don't have anything. Okay, we returned from closed sessions. Does anybody have anything else before the board?
I would like to say that this is President's Day and we honor our founding fathers, George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, all our presidents that helped shape the history of our country. True pioneers that stepped out and made this country what it is. So happy President's Day or what's left of it.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn then?
Most adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay, on my favor say aye. Okay, we're adjourned. Everybody be safe.